Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of January 23rd, 2017. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
We'll get used to it.
I got this.
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here.
President Burton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We would like to extend a very special welcome to all of our guests this evening. We have a number of folks who are here for a very special purpose, and that is to see the swearing in of our re-elected and our newly-elected school board members. Thank you very, very much for taking your time out in your evening and helping this to be a very celebratory event for all of us. If you would like to follow along with an agenda and you do not have one, if you're present in our room this evening, they can be found on the table just outside the doorway. If you are watching from home, you can follow along with our agendas that are found online on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 2, Administering the Constitutional Oath of Office to Tammy Bonnefield, Dan Centers, Karen Bradford, and Crystal Frank. We have three honored guests with us this evening that will be administering these oaths of office, and I would like to call to the podium at this time Tammy Bonnefield and Judge Kathleen McCann.
I, Tammy Bonnefield, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of Board of Education.
Of the Livonia Public School District.
Of the Livonia Public School District.
Wayne County, Michigan.
Wayne County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.[151.16][151.16](Applause).
I'd like to call to the podium at this time Dan Centers and Judge Kathleen McCann.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat it. I, Dan Center.
I, Dan Center.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the...
Office of...
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the Livonia Public School District.
Of the Livonia Public School District.
Wayne County, Michigan.
Wayne County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.[220.43][220.43](Applause).
I would like to call to the podium at this time Karen Bradford and Representative Cara Clemente.
Hi, Karen M. Bradford, do solemnly swear.
Hi, Karen M. Bradford, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the Livonia Public School District.
Of the Livonia Public School District.
Wayne County, Michigan.
Wayne County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.[291.12][291.12](Applause).
Okay, now I get to take the mic. That's a scary thing.[301.12][301.12](Laughter). I just want to say a few words of thanks to my first, Cara Clemente. Cara Clemente just became the State House Representative for District 14, which is down in Lincoln Park. She and I have a great friend past. We worked together at Cabrini back in our days teaching, and since she had just gotten into office, I thought she would be the perfect candidate to swear me in, so thank you so much, Cara, for coming. And for my other friend, Elizabeth Bohanek, she also and I taught together at the same spot, so I appreciate them being here tonight. Secondly, well, I should've said firstly.[346.22][346.22](Laughter). I'd like to thank my husband, John. Back when I first told him I was going to run for this position, well, we had a lot of conversation at the house.[359.12][359.12](Laughter). But it turns out, he supports me 100%, and I appreciate it, every day that I get the opportunity to take the time to serve on the Livonia School Board, so I'm... Thank you, John, for supporting me.
You're welcome.[378.31][378.31](Applause).
And lastly, I would just like to thank the voters of the city of Livonia that came out to the polls, and whatever you did to help my cause, I am so appreciative of that, and I'm honored and really humbled that so many people did take the time to come out and vote for me, so I appreciate that, and I do... I'm ready to serve, and I look forward to the next four years. Thank you.[409.81][409.81](Applause).
This time, I'd like to call to the podium Crystal Frank and Treasurer Linda Scheel. Crystal, if you'd raise your right hand.
I, Crystal Frank.
I, Crystal Frank.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of member of Board of Education.
Of the Livonia Public Schools School District.
Livonia Public Schools School District.
Wayne County, Michigan.
Wayne County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.[468.34][468.34](Applause).
Okay, Karen, since you started it. Thank you, Karen, who we ran together as a group, and Karen and I were the newbies of the group, and so, thank you so much. I just have to thank Karen for all of her support as we ran through the election process. This was our first, and so, she made it so much fun and so enjoyable to get to know so many people of Livonia, and really to get to know our community well. She was raised here, I was not, and so she brought me along with her, and so I just wanted to say thank you to Karen and the entire school board. Everyone has been so gracious. And Linda Scheel was amazing, and so, it is... I'm honored tonight that she was willing to administer my oath, because she has been amazing and showing me the way of entering into this new venture. I just want to say thank you to my kids up here in the front row, to my sweet husband, Lucas, to Logan, Kaylee, Carson, and Addison, who have put up with many nights that their mother was not there, so thank you, guys. I am so honored to be your mom. It's the most important thing I do. And I just also wanted to say really quickly, thank you to everyone who came out tonight to support all four of us and the entire school district, especially all the members of our City Council, the mayor, just so many people have been beyond gracious to us, as we have... We work and we strive to make our schools the best in the state, so thank you so much for everyone, for your support, and we look forward to serving together. Thank you.[561.25][561.25](Applause). Thank you again to Treasurer Linda Scheel, to Judge Kathleen McCann, and to Representative Cara Clemente for taking the time out to come out and make this very special and very personal for all of our school board members. The next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Are there any members of the audience that wish to address the board at this time? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Election of Officers. The first office that we are taking nominations for is the Election of President. Are there any nominations for President of the Board of Education?
President Burton.
District Centers.
I would like to nominate you, Colleen Burton, for the Office of President.
Thank you.
Support.
Are there any other nominations for Officer President? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Do we need to make a formal motion?
We do not. For the election, we do not.
Okay.
Good checking.[633.12][633.12](Laughter).
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank my fellow school board members. We are all happy to serve in whatever ways that we're called to do so. It is my honor to serve as President of a group whom I have such respect for, so thank you very much. The next office to take nominations is the Office of Vice President. Would anyone like to make a nomination for the Office of Vice President at this time? I'm going to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Mark Johnson as Vice President of the School Board.
Support.
Are there any other nominations for school... For Vice President, rather? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.[702.82][702.82](Laughter).
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for the nomination, and it's an honor to not only serve on the board, but to serve in an elected position. I've done it before. Sometimes it's not easy, but we get through it, and I appreciate the support of my colleagues on the board. Thank you.
The next item is the Election of Secretary. Do we have a nomination for the Office of Secretary?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Mr. Centers as Secretary.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Secretary? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Appointment of Treasurer. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that Allison Smith be appointed Treasurer of the Livonia Public Schools School District for 2017.
Support.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? For those who are in attendance this evening, it has been customary, and it is in keeping with our board policy, that our Director of Finance, I believe is the appropriate title for Mrs. Smith, he also appointed the Treasurer of the School Board, because heaven knows, the other seven of us don't want to do that.[799.41][799.41](Laughter). We are thrilled to have her do so. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It is the end of the agenda for our special meeting at 6:45. We will reconvene at 7:00 or a couple minutes thereafter, and again, we would like to thank all of you who came out for our special meeting this evening. We are now adjourned. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of January 23rd, 2017. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Yes, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Present.
Mrs. Bradford.
Present.
Mrs. Frank.
Present.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. President Burton.
Here. Okay. Thank you. And we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Mr. Centers, would you please lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to our meeting. We took care of inducting, or rather, swearing in, two returning board members just a few minutes ago, Tammy Bonnefield and Dan Centers, and welcoming two new members to our Board of Education, Crystal Frank and Karen Bradford. So, we have celebrated already some this evening, and we will continue on with a lot of other exciting activities that we have coming up quickly. If you would like to follow along with an agenda this evening and you're present in our room, we have agendas on the table just outside the door. Feel free to grab one if you'd like. If you're following along from home and you'd like an agenda, you can find one on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab and drop down to Agendas, you can follow along. Tonight's meeting is a regular meeting, and by that, it means that we have talked about the items that are coming before the board at typically at least two other meetings. So if you're here to see a lot of discussion among the board on certain items that are coming up for a vote, you may not see the level of discussion that you would expect, please know that that's not because we take any of these items lightly. It is because we have talked about them in our study sessions and our committee of the whole, and so, by the time we've talked about them at least at two other meetings, we'll bring them forward for a vote tonight. You may not see the level of discussions that you would expect. If you are interested in some more lengthy discussion on items for the Board of Education, I do encourage you to tune into the Committee of the Whole meetings, which are typically the week before any regular meeting. They can be found on our website also, livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to our meeting dates. If you're looking for a lot of question and answers and in-depth discussion, please do tune into our Committee of the Whole meetings, and you will find it there. You better bring a cup of coffee, because sometimes it can get a little lengthy. The next item on our agenda this evening is Communications, and the first item, Item 3A, is our Student Art Gallery featuring Stevenson High School. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the board, Superintendent Oquist. Tonight, it is my pleasure... Can you hear me okay? Mrs. (Inaudible). Tonight, it's my pleasure to highlight some pretty awesome pieces of artwork by some pretty awesome student artists. This month, the Student Art Gallery program features works by five Stevenson High School students, who are selected to have their artwork on display here at the Board Office for the next month or so. And as you can see, we filled up the board this time, and we've got pieces up here at the front of the table as well. This is quite an honor for these students, considering Stevenson has approximately 300 students enrolled each semester in a wide variety of art classes, including drawing, painting, film photography, digital photography, jewelry, clay, art, art fundamentals, and there are advanced art techniques, advanced levels for each of these courses, as well as independent study. All of these classes are taught by the masterful teachers, Brooke Brewster and Heidi Posh, both are in attendance this evening. Thanks for joining us, ladies. We appreciate that. I should also mention that Stevenson has a National Art Honor Society, in which students take part in field trips. They go to places such as Art Prize in Grand Rapids, the Detroit Institute of Arts, and the College of Creative Studies. The NAHS students also give up their time, and they are involved in teaching art classes at the Stevenson feeder schools, such as Holmes Middle School. I thought that was pretty neat, too. Suffice to say, the arts are alive and well at Stevenson High School. They even have student artwork on display at the Looney Baker. If you ever stop into the Looney Baker for some delicious Looney bread, make sure you pay attention to the artwork on the wall. Those are by some of our Stevenson students. Tonight, we are recognizing five students, and each will be presented with a certificate. And the certificate reads, "Livonia Public School Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Stevenson High School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, January 23rd, 2017, and it's signed by Superintendent Oquist and myself." I should also mention that, let's see, some of our honorees are also so dedicated to their studies. Final exams start tomorrow, so we weren't sure on the level of attendance for our students this evening. One student is so dedicated that she actually sent her mom on her behalf.[1192.32][1192.32](Laughter). She continues to study, so I thought that was really neat. So without further ado, I'd love to call our first honoree to the podium, Natalie Kelzer. Natalie is a ninth grader at Stevenson.
And parents, if you would like to move to a more opportune spot to take photos, feel free to do so. And Natalie, we always like to have the students pick out which pieces are yours. We've got several up there, I bet.
Yeah. I did the hands that are drawing each other with pencils. I did the girl's face with the shiny eyes, and I did the mannequin that is a puppet.
Beautiful. Very nice. Congratulations. Thank you.[1238.32][1238.32](Applause).
Okay, next certificate is for Michelle Lynn, and I believe I am presenting to her mother. Here we go.
(Inaudible).
Okay. Sister is joining us as well. Here you go. Here's the certificate for Michelle. There you go. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Sorry, Michelle can't help you.
Oh, no.
Hey, studies are important. And Michelle's pieces are the two photos on the very end, so the hands and the food photography, and then the pink and the light blue one kind of in the middle on the top.
Okay. And all three photography?
Digital photography, yep.
Okay, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1287.25][1287.25](Applause).
Next, we have Katrina Musling, and Katrina is an 11th grader. Katrina, there you are. Congratulations. And which pieces are yours?
I have the sea bass up there.
Okay.
The wooden melting clock and the food basket.
Okay, very nice. Those are all three different mediums, huh?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Very nice. Congratulations. Thank you.[1316.75][1316.75](Applause). Next, we have Alexa Pierzinski. Alexa is a senior.
I'm a junior.
Oh, you're a junior?
Yeah.
Oh, I just promoted you.[1330.25][1330.25](Laughter). There you go.
Thank you.
And which pieces are yours?
Mine is the flowers with the gas mess.
Okay.
The one below with the eye of the sun, and then the bread and food.
All three photographed? Okay. Very nice. Thank you. Congratulations.[1347.25][1347.25](Applause). And finally, we have Laura Stevens. Laura, now, are you a senior?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And which pieces are yours?
The four ceramic pieces up in the front.
Oh, wow. Tell us a little bit about it. A little gnome house.
A little...
How do you call that?
Just a fairy house.
Fairy house.
Yeah, and then a little sunbox, a mosaic, like a little mermaid pond.
Okay, very nice. Thank you so much for sharing those.[1378.82][1378.82](Applause). Okay. This might be the best display we've had yet. The variety is amazing. Also, I'd like to draw your attention to the boardroom lobby area, where this month we are featuring art by students from Cooper and Johnson Upper Elementary, so be sure to check those pieces out in the lobby of the Board Office on your way out. Okay, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Are there comments from board members of the superintendent?
Amazing. I thought they were going to start the bidding.[1411.25][1411.25](Laughter). And thank you so much for being here. We appreciate, especially on a night like tonight, when I know your finals begin, and what an honor for you to be selected from so many talented students, and thank you so much to Ms. Brewster and Ms. Posh for being here this evening and for all of your efforts. I know how much you care about your students and the time you take with them, and that certainly shows, so thank you to all of you and to the parents for coming out this evening as well.
Let's give them one more round of applause.[1441.32][1441.32](Applause).
I'd like to mention, too, that after Item 3D, which will be not too long from now, we are going to take a break so that we can congratulate our student artists and our other honorees of the evening. The next item on our agenda right now is Item 3B, Recognition of Board Members for School Board Recognition Month.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. With this item, I'm gladly... I'm gladly going to turn the tables on you tonight. Don't worry, it's a good thing. Each month, you listen to presentations about people in our district who do great things to deserve our collective recognition. Tonight, I'm happy to turn that very attention to each of you as members of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education. January is School Board Recognition Month in the state of Michigan. We are joining the 540 local and 56 intermediate school districts across the state of Michigan to say thank you. As members of the Board of Education, you are among the more than 4,000 community volunteers statewide who serve on local school boards and who give freely of your time and talents to benefit your districts and staff. Our district is very fortunate to have a group of board members who take this public trust and responsibility of this role very seriously. As members of this board, you dedicate an enormous number of hours preparing for and participating in board meetings, not just the regular meetings such as this evening, but also in-depth study sessions and committee meetings, in addition to workshops, and any special meetings that may be called throughout any given month. You are faced with decisions that are often challenging and some that are quite difficult. You are tasked with a very large responsibility of hiring and evaluating the superintendent, and also for overseeing a $145 million budget that provides the foundation for educating more than 14,500 students with nearly 2,000 employees in our district. You develop, review, and update policies and procedures, and much more. You have taken this large responsibility on behalf of the voters in our community, and we thank you for that. We see your every effort to chart a course that provides long-term, sustainable success for our current and future students, and we see your deep care in all of these things. I think it's so great to see you at school activities and special events. You're always there with warm smiles and genuine support for our schools. We can see that you are also very proud to serve, and we thank you for that. Many may not realize that you, as board members, have either completed or you're working toward your certification through the Michigan Association of School Boards. This also is a very large task and a true accomplishment. I would like to now read a resolution that was recently adopted by the Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency Board of Education. That's a mouthful. Wayne Reeser Board of Education. The Wayne Reeser Board of Education adopted a resolution entitled Local School District's Board of Education Recognition Resolution. They adopted this on December 21st, 2016. Whereas the Boards of Education of the 33 constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for all children attending their local schools, and whereas these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County and their communities, and whereas Wayne County school boards are strong advocates for the needs of their students in their communities and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County school boards regularly do all they can to ensure academic success for all Wayne County schools, and whereas Wayne County school boards understand the importance of equality education for its youth and recognize that this is the most important factor in the success of our local communities, state, and our country. Whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas the state of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January 2017 as School Board Recognition Month. Now, therefore be it resolved that Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency Board of Education, in the spirit of the Board of Education Recognition Month theme, School Boards Lead Strong, recognizes, celebrates, and commends the dedication, contributions, and leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of Education, presented and adopted December 21st, 2016. And now, we have, if I may, President Burton approach. I've got a certificate for each of you. And this certificate reads, "School Board Recognition Month, January 2017, in appreciation of your dedication to our children and public education in Michigan." And these are signed by the Michigan Association of School Boards President and Executive Director.
Now, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Oakley, who would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Well, this year's theme for recognition by the Wayne County Reeser School Board is "School Boards Lead Strong." And I really can't think of a better theme to recognize our local school board in Livonia. As Mrs. Jenkins noted, our board members are either already certified board members through the Michigan Association of School Boards or are already well on their way. I think our newest trustees went to their first sessions the day after the election or two days after the election. This is a group of folks who volunteer their time, and again, as Mrs. Jenkins said, truly countless hours. It begins with a board packet that is delivered to them on Thursday that contains extensive information, coming forward for that about this past week and then the meetings ahead. In each of our meetings, one of the things that I always appreciate from our board is the thoughtful nature of their questions, their inquiries, their requests for more information, and their desire to be not only very judicious stewards of our resources, but more importantly, to determine what decisions will be best in the best interests of the children we serve and the staff that we serve. This is evident each and every time I work with these folks, and it's certainly not just at these meetings, but many, many conversations, emails, and opportunities to dialogue between as well. So, we are also appreciative. We are also appreciative to your families for the time that you give to us, not only on these evenings, but on the many evenings where we have special events in the district. So, thank you. We appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you. Other comments from board members?
What's there to say?
It's a little bit awkward when, as you said, the tables are a little bit turned here. It is truly, if I can speak on behalf of my colleagues, it is truly an honor to serve. It is, it's a lot of time, but it's a lot of passion. As we have taken classes all around the state of Michigan, we have all come away with the same comment, which is Livonia truly is a lighthouse district. It's exciting to go around the state of Michigan and visit with other school boards and have them say, "Oh, you're from Livonia. Wow. That's a huge district. You guys do a lot of amazing things." And it's not what the school board does, but rather, it's what this entire district does together. We have phenomenal staff. We have one of the strongest PTAs, if not the strongest PTA in the state of Michigan. Our parent support is amazing, and our students are terrific. So, it is truly an honor to serve, and thank you very much for this recognition. The next item on our agenda this evening, rather, is item 3C, recognition of Sheila Alice, Chief Academic Officer. It is with a sad heart that I bring this item to our board and to our public this evening. Sheila Alice, after 42 years of service in public education and 21 of those years with Livonia Public Schools, is retiring at the end of this month. She will leave enormous shoes to fill. Really pretty shoes, too, by the way. Stunning shoes, usually. But truly, Sheila leaves no stone unturned. She covers so many details that the district is responsible to the state for, and so many educational and instructional items that have to be passed down to our staff and make sure that we are all marching in the same direction. It's a comfort to us to know that Sheila has been at the helm of this important area of our district for so long, and we wish you very well.
I'm going to stop at that point because I'm sure Mr. Johnson has words to say. I would like to invite Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Alice to the podium at this time.
Sheila, it is with great pleasure, sort of reluctantly, that I present you with this resolution tonight. Just to, I just want to say a few things. You know, I've been in business a long time, and there are very few people that I've come across in my time that have the passion that you have for what you do. We see that every day out of you. You're a walking computer. We ask questions, and rarely do you have to go and get an answer. You have it right off the top of your head. And as a board, hopefully, I can speak for them, that is invaluable to us. What you've given to us, at least for my six and a half years, is unsurpassed. I really, really appreciate it, and I think my board colleagues do as well, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
And therefore, it is, again, with great pleasure that I give you this resolution and allow me to read it for you because you have done so many wonderful things for the district. Whereas, it has been brought to the attention of the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District that Sheila Alice will retire from the district on January 31st, 2017. And whereas, Sheila Alice has devoted 20.7 years of dedicated, loyal, and outstanding service to the students and staff of Roosevelt Elementary School as principal and throughout the district as Director of Elementary Instruction, Director of Academic Services, and Chief Academic Officer. And whereas, she has made many contributions to the educational profession and has touched the lives of countless students during her tenure with the Livonia Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby congratulate Sheila Alice on her years of service to the educational profession and expresses publicly its sincere appreciation and offers its best wishes for her retirement. Congratulations, Sheila.
I hope you don't mind if I say a few words.
Go right ahead.
As you know, I am not a woman of few words, so I'll keep with that tonight as well. First of all, let me thank you so much for your kind words this evening, your recognition and your praise. It truly does mean a great deal to me. It has been my pleasure, my privilege, and my honor to be a part of Livonia Public Schools' family for these past 21 years. As Mrs. Burton said this evening, I've been in public education for 42 years. As of this month, January 1975, I was hired by Ray Palmerville to teach second grade at Marshall Elementary School, right here in Livonia. So, I started my career in January, and I'm wrapping up my career in January. Another similarity was, at that time, in 1975, Livonia was experiencing declining enrollment. And so, in the spring of, just like we are now, in the spring of the year, I was pink-slept. And so, I was in search of another position, and Plymouth Canton hired me in the summer of '75, and I worked there for 21 years as a teacher, a curriculum coordinator, and a curriculum director before I got hired back into Livonia. And so, in the summer of 1996, Livonia hired me back. And as Mr. Johnson said, I was the principal of Roosevelt Elementary School, the Director of Elementary Instructional Programs, Director of Academic Services, and now the Chief Academic Officer. And over those, over my career, I've had a tremendously rewarding career, but my career has offered me some really valuable opportunities. I've had the opportunity to work with some tremendously talented school staff, teachers, secretaries, parapros, support staff, building supervisors, and custodians. I've had a wonderful opportunity to lead with some very, very dedicated school administrators, principals, and assistant principals. I've been very fortunate to have the opportunity to meet, get to know, and appreciate very involved and invested school board members like yourself, parents, community members, elected officials. My positions have allowed me the opportunity to network with some wonderfully talented university staff members, leaders of professional organizations, administrators in other school districts, and leaders of our bargaining units. I've had the very distinct pleasure of leading the Academic Services Department for 13 years, a department that is near and dear to my heart. The people in that department care about each other. They work to service our schools and support our schools. They collaborate. They problem solve. They relate so well with each other. They care about each other. And I have had the privilege of leading that group. Not to say also that they've been really good sports, because I've had some really zany ideas on what to do for our annual holiday extravaganza performances, and they've gone along with me very willingly. I have also had the fabulous opportunity to be a part of the most cohesive and well-functioning central office staff that any district could possibly have, especially my cabinet-level colleagues and our superintendent, who I love very dearly. You have a group of people who give tirelessly to this district, who care passionately about this district, whose emphasis in everything that they do is maintaining the premier status of this district across our state. I am going to miss them tremendously. For the last 21 years, I have gotten up every morning looking forward to coming to work because I work for Livonia Public Schools, and I am a part of Livonia Public Schools' family. A group of people who care about each other and care for each other. So, when I leave the end of this month, I will be leaving behind some wonderful friends, some dear colleagues, and some people that I care a great deal about and love deeply. And I'm going to take with me some cherished memories that will last my lifetime. And so, I want to say, in closing, that it has truly been an honor, a privilege, and a wonderful opportunity for me to service Livonia Public Schools' school community, the students, the staff, the parents. I could not have asked for a better opportunity than the one that you have had, the confidence and the faith to allow me to be a part of. So, I thank you so much from the very bottom of my heart, and thank you for this recognition this evening.
You are most welcome. Do we have any comments from our superintendent or board members? Mrs. Oakley?
Certainly. Sheila, we are so grateful for you, for who you are, for all that you give to us. I know our board colleagues are going to want to share some thoughts as well, so I will just share that you have made an indelible impact on Livonia Public Schools in big and small ways. Some of the big ways, as I'm sure we all recognize, are through the efforts you've made through our school improvement efforts, advanced ed, leading an extensive external review process that you promised you would retire before we went through again, if I recall. That worked, in which the district was awarded the highest rating that is able to be given to a school district. That is in no small part because of you. Initiatives that you have begun not only at the school level, but at the district level. And your, as Trustee Johnson remarked, your passion and enthusiasm has never waned since the moment I met you. So, it is a privilege to be your friend, to be your colleague, and we will miss you greatly.
Comments from other board members? Mr. Siders?
I was recently speaking with one of our former board members, Mrs. Laura, and she was, she and I were talking, and we decided we don't think we've met anyone that's quite as organized as you ever in our lifetime. And that is saying a lot because we work with some people that are incredibly organized and prepared, but you are so meticulous, and it's been such, it's been very apparent, and we're really going to miss that, and we're going to miss having you here, so enjoy, though. Enjoy some time away.
Other board members? Mr. Johnson?
There's still time to change your mind.
Any other comments? If I may share also, Mrs. Alice is going to continue to bless the kids of the state of Michigan following a hiatus and some time to hopefully take some, a little bit of enjoyment and a little bit of R and R. Mrs. Alice has accepted a position with the Michigan Department of Education where she will continue to serve the students of the state of Michigan, and we are blessed and fortunate to have you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda this evening is our district update from the superintendent, after which we will take a brief break.
I promise, my high school friends are hanging in there. They have got to go, and they have got to study. At least, we're sticking to that, right? That's what we're planning on. We are so proud of our talented artists this evening. Thank you so much for getting our new calendar year off to a great start by being here and by gracing our boardroom with this beautiful work. I'm always pleased to share updates on the activities of our district, and so I just want to highlight a few positive things happening out and around Livonia Public Schools. We have had a great start back to the school year since the start of our new calendar year and our return from break. We've had some iffy weather, and so I want to certainly give a shout out to our operations and maintenance staff who really are up in the very, very early morning hours, along with our building supervisors, readying our schools, our lots, and our facilities for our students and staff each day. We have had a number of special activities taking place in the district in the past couple of weeks since we've been back. I want to highlight a couple of LPTSA, our Livonia PTSA Council have hosted a couple of important events. We had an opportunity to recognize 120 students, Mrs. Pierzinski, at Reflections. The Reflections contest is an awards program, and we were able to highlight many creative and talented individuals last week at Churchill High School. One of the co-chairs of that event, Mrs. Pierzinski, is here, and also Niedary, is that correct? Was also, is also the co-chair. The students create just phenomenal displays of creativity in the area of visual arts, dance choreography, music composition, filmmaking, photography. I think I got that one. Okay, so I think we've got, and literature, yes, thank you. And we just so enjoyed seeing the students come up and receive recognition for their work and for the opportunity that the LPTSA gave us to put that evening together to recognize many, many talented individuals, kindergarten through 12th grade. Also, the annual, becoming very, very popular, Dad's Chili Cook-Off took place last Saturday at Franklin High School. Many of us at this table were in attendance and enjoyed some delicious chili. I have to say, my favorite, I think, came in second, but I enjoyed all that I tasted. We had 28 entries, and that was coordinated by Kelly Dumer and, I believe, and Rob Dzurki, who also are on LPTSA Council. And it was a great event. We had the mayor there as a guest judge, members of the Kiwanis, members of the community, and many members of our staff there as well. So, I'd like to thank all of the dads who did some cooking and allowed us a great opportunity to come together on Saturday at Franklin. We also have tomorrow evening just an amazing event called the Young Inventors Showcase. At Vista Tech tomorrow night, we will be recognizing many, many middle school students from across Livonia and Clarenceville who have put their ingenuity to work and have created a unique invention that they are presenting to the group of business leaders and to members of the Chamber of Commerce. They will be recognized for their invention. They will share their idea, and then students will be recognized for that. And the Young Inventors Showcase provides an opportunity for those students to talk a little bit about their invention with business individuals and also enjoy a special recognition dinner. So, we'd like to thank the Livonia Chamber of Commerce and all of our business partners for providing that opportunity for our students. I'd like to highlight just a couple quick notes about our district transition team. As you know, we will begin the process of merging and transitioning some of our elementary school communities after the decision in December to close both Cass and Garfield. So, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the district transition team, which has been put together and will... has been put together and will be, is focused on working to provide a successful, positive, and supported transition for our students, for our staff, and for our parents. We will have a parent and a staff representative from all of the seven schools impacted, meaning they may be a receiving school or a sending school. We'll also have members of our Student Services Department, of our PTA Council, all working together on this process. And we will also be, the second piece of that, will be bringing to the Board of Education in March, a recommendation for the relocation of the Western Wayne Skill Center, which was also something that had been discussed over the course of this past year. That recommendation will come to the Board in both study session and committee meeting discussions prior to a vote by the Board of Education. And I want to make an important note that all of the programs that we provide at the Western Wayne Skill Center for students age 18 to 26 with special needs remain intact. So we are simply relocating that program. All programs will remain available to all of our students. We wanted to be sure to clarify that piece. And finally, the Michigan Department of Education recently released the scorecards on each of our schools. In an upcoming meeting, we'll be talking about some of that information in detail. But I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Churchill High School, who have put in place a myriad of efforts over the past couple of years, as you get that report each quarter from Mrs. Alice. And they have been taken off of the focus school status, and we congratulate them on their work, their tireless efforts with their students, and congratulate them on their success. And Webster Elementary was once again designated as a state reward school by the Michigan Department of Education, and so we acknowledge their efforts as well. Finally, as we've talked about, final exams begin for our secondary students this week. We wish them all good luck. We thank the staff for their extra efforts in preparation for this time of year, and we're so pleased for the folks we have in attendance here this evening and those joining us from home. Thank you, President Burton.
Thank you. At this time, we will take a brief break to congratulate our honorees of the evening, and then we will continue on with the business of the board. Right now, we are at recess. Welcome back to the continuation of the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools' Board of Education, meeting of January 23, 2017. Continuing with our meeting, Mrs. Oakley, you'd like to add a few more items?
I just wanted to add a special item that was shared with us this evening. We have a truly outstanding robotics group entitled the Livonia Warriors in our district. We are so pleased, I think in just a moment, we're going to hear from two of the captains of that talented group. But I would like to share with you a very special evening that they have planned. On February 1, the Livonia Warriors invite our community to an open door, a peek inside to see, is the robot going to still be in the making, or, yes?
It'll be in the making.
In the making, yes. I'm getting a very affirmative response that we will still be in the making. It is truly, if you have not had an opportunity to see one of the competitions, it is just masterful work that goes on at each of these competitions with each of the students and their volunteer coordinators playing such important roles. But this particular evening is an opportunity to see that robot coming together. So the doors will be open at Dickinson from 6:30 until 8:00 p.m. Folks can stop in anytime, is that correct? And they would love to have you join them. The leader of the group, our staff coordinator, Isalina Carlini, is here this evening as well, and I know she would love to see many of our folks out for this special evening. So thank you for the invitation, and we are so pleased to have you with us tonight. Thank you, President Burton.
You're very welcome. The next item on our agenda this evening is item 3E, written communications. Does anyone have written communications they would like to share? President Burton? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I understand that I made some hurtful comments at our recent school board meeting, and I wanted to apologize for my actions. My delivery was inappropriate and reflects poorly on the district I cherish with all my heart. I truly believe that each and every employee and volunteer in our district provides the very best opportunities for the students and families that walk through the doors of any one of our schools, and that every child at each of our schools is valued. That was the intended core of my message. Unfortunately, I did not convey the message well. I extend a sincere apology and assure you that I will not make the same mistake in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other written communications that anyone would like to share? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is item 3F, audience communications. Audience communications is set up as a time for the Board of Education to listen to members of our community. We are open to whatever folks would like to share with us. We do have a limit of three minutes per person, and the reason for that is so that we can hear everyone and that everyone can be heard fairly and given the same amount of time to speak. If you do hear a little beeping, then you'll know that you've hit your three minutes and could wrap up your comments. That would be appreciated. We have found that to be a more polite way than interrupting a speaker. We do have two young ladies, who are, I believe, students in our district, who would like to address the board at audience communications this evening. Emma, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Emma Farqu...
Farquharson.
Farquharson, okay, thank you. And Carolyn McKenzie, if Emma and Carolyn would like to approach the podium. Welcome this evening.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hello.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, President Burton, and Superintendent Oakley.
We are senior captains of the Livonia Warriors robotics team. My name is Emma Farquharson, as previously mentioned, and I attend Stevenson.
My name is Carolyn, and I attend Churchill.
Our team comprises of students from Churchill, Franklin, and Stevenson. This past fall has been an exciting time, as we have been mentoring and supporting our farm teams. The Emerson Robo Eagles, the Frost Robo Falcons, the Holmes Robo Hawks Green, and the Holmes Robo Hawks White.
On December 10, we kettled up all the birds and flew in the direction of Kemphrens, Michigan. Although there were some, although there were some of the toughest, most established FTC teams in Michigan at the middle school level in Bedford, we were Livonia strong in the competition and in award presentations. Our middle schoolers were great, our mentors were awesome, and our families were the best.
We had a tremendously successful start to the day at Bedford Middle School. Everyone behaved perfectly. We were all surprised to see a special visit from Mr. Strongberg, principal of Holmes. He checked out all the teams and wished everyone luck. Parents and family members pitched in right and with peeping order, watching kids and serving our picnic lunch. It was interesting to see how, although each team had their own picnic lunch and area, the students from all four teams just came in and wanted to stay together. They shared their lunches and chairs, just not to be separated, even though they were four teams. It was very touching to watch, actually.
As the afternoon competition matches began, our teams flew hard. However, only the Frost Robo Falcons were picked for the elimination rounds. Again, we saw the same transition we saw at lunch. Our four middle school teams that were at times competing against each other suddenly became just Livonia. The Frost Robo Falcons came up and soared through the quarterfinal elimination rounds, and then even higher to the semifinals round. Livonia roared with crazy excitement for their comrades as Frost advanced to the final match of the final round at Bedford for the championship.
However, in the last match of the day was not to be. Frost Alliance, the red team, lost to the blue team. One of the red robots caused a 10-point penalty for a final score of 110 red to 115 blue. So we lost by five points.
Oh.
So, but there was consolation for Frost. They did win the PTC Design Award. This award celebrates teams that incorporate industrial design elements into their solution. Congratulations to Frost Middle School on a great battle and an awesome award.
Livonia Warriors are extremely proud of their young charges in FTC and the work they were able to do with them this fall. As our 2017 First Robotics Game Steamworks kicks off this month, we are looking forward to stopping in from time to time to tell you all about it.
Livonia Warriors.
Year up.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions that we may answer? It's now the time for questions and answers at this time. However, we are going to be bringing more students in to present to the board, and at that time, we may do so. But thank you very much for being a transition between the idea of bringing students in and giving us our first trial run. It's appreciated. And congratulations so much, you make us so proud.
Thank you.
It is wonderful, wonderful, to see our students participating in our school board meetings. It is something that, as I mentioned, we're making a concerted effort to do more of, and it's exciting to see our art students, our warriors, and so many of our student organizations in this district to be able to really succeed. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to participate in audience communications at this time? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is item 4, our consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of December 19, 2016. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of December 5, 2016. 5C, minutes of the closed session of December 5, 2016. 6A, bills for payment, January 24, 2017.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis that is supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Mr. Centers, would you please take the role? We have the motion from Mrs. Jarvis, again, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, oh, I'm sorry, could board members all pass in their minutes The next item on our agenda this evening is 6B, approval of bid results for multi-function copiers and printers for the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the purchase of multi-function copiers and printers throughout the district from Rico USA Incorporated, Novi, Michigan, for the total cost of $1,169,697.50, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute the final contract and terms on behalf of the Livonia Public Schools District Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. And, let's see here, Mr. Francis, would you like to address this item for the board?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. Our current multi-function copiers, which are located in buildings and apartments across the district and the central office complex, are eight to 10 years old and are in need of replacing. This was a planned budgeted purpose out of the 2013 bond. So the printers we proposed to purchase will replace some 18- to 20-year-old HP laser printers that are currently used in the schools. Rico has provided excellent service and support over the last 10 years, in addition to the available features and reliability of the machines. Rico USA Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder on the My Deal Extended Purchasing Program.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from board members? Mr. Centers?
Can you talk throughout, just a minute, there's, we have some, again, we've talked about this throughout the course of our study sessions and our committee, the whole meetings, but there are going to be some efficiencies built in with the new systems here. Can you tell us just a little bit more about that and why it's advantageous for the district?
Sure. The plan is that while the overall number of printers and/or multi-function devices may decrease, the efficiencies on the cost per, what they call the per-click, will be reduced. Also, the speeds are faster, and we're going to have more of the multi-function devices put through some of our larger buildings, so there's more access. Right now, for the most part, for example, in our high schools, a staff member would travel to the main office or to the teacher workroom near the LMC. The plan is to add those numbers in strategic areas across the building, so it's more efficient to get to. In addition, we are proposing a plan of a printing process or a printing software that will follow the user. So you could print now, and 30 minutes or three hours later, go to the device and use your badge to get your printing at that point.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from board or superintendent? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to jump back up to item 3G, which I apologize, I skipped right over, which is response to prior audience communications. At one of our last board meetings, we had a member of the community who was concerned that Hoover did not have an adequate number of seats in one of their classrooms, and we found out that that was addressed during the meeting, it was being addressed, to find out what was going on with that. Mrs. Scott, would you please address that for the community?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. A reference was made about students at Hoover sitting on gallon buckets because they did not have enough chairs. I want to assure the board and our community that Livonia Public Schools has enough chairs for all our students. I checked with the principal, Mrs. Lynn, at Hoover to inquire about this concern. Currently, Hoover has two teachers using the bucket seats. Fourth grade class has six of them, and a second grade class has four. The teachers made them by sewing a pad and fabric on the bottom to create a stool for the students to use. Some of the parents liked them so much because their, because their, some of the parents liked them so much because their students liked them, that they actually took them home and sewed on even new fabric and more cushions on them just last week. The principal, Ms. Lynn, did include an article in her Hoover Proud blog for the Hoover community to read and look at the pictures of the students using these choices. Some of the pictures showed other flexible seating choices that are being used, not just in that classroom, but in other classrooms. Hoover, along with other schools, are experimenting with flexible seating that gives students a choice in what kind of learning space works best for them on an individual basis, depending upon the task that they're doing. There are a variety of extra seats in the classroom besides the standard chair option for these students to choose.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
As many businesses and other workplaces are experiencing, schools are no different. We're recognizing that students also work in different configurations depending on their specific needs. So I commend the parents and the teachers for providing some extra options for our students that might work just better for them at a given time. Now we will proceed with the rest of our meeting. The next item on our agenda is item 6B, I'm sorry, nope, that was done. 6C, approval of bid results for Genie scissors lift from the 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Bradford, rather, I'm sorry. Sorry.
President, sorry. President Burton, move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of a Genie 2632 scissor lift from McAllister Rentals, Wixom, Michigan, for a total cost of $14,107. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis, could you address that for the board, please?
Yes, thank you. This purchase of the Genie 2632 scissor lift will provide our technicians, HVAC, plumbers, electricians, and the such, more flexibility and increase the production on the work that's assigned. It can be, it can cause, or allows much more flexibility and essentially speed of a particular job that's done overhead to move the machine forward to get the lift up there. So McAllister Rentals was the lowest responsible bidder on this scissor lift, and we're recommending it for purchase.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, this is one of, as I mentioned earlier in our meeting, one of several items that we discussed at length in our previous couple of meetings. We chuckled because it was a lot of length. So anyway, I'm not surprised that we don't have a whole lot of questions at this point. We have a motion at this time by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 6D, approval... The next item on our agenda is item six D, approval of bid results for bandshells two thousand thirteen bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Frank.
I move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of three ban, bandshells from Wagner Corporation, um, from Owantana, Minnesota, for a total cost of three hundred, or, uh, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, thousand dollars.
And one for each high school?
Yes, and one for each high school.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Uh, Mr. Francis, would you address that for the board, please?
Absolutely, President Burton. Uh, the purchase of the three bandshells is actually a planned purchase from the two thousand thirteen bond for the performing arts centers at each of our three high schools, Churchill, Franklin, and Stevenson. Uh, this will be a new addition to the performing arts centers at Franklin and Stevenson and a required replacement of the bandshell for Churchill High School. Wagner Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder on the cooperative purchasing network known as the TCPN, in which Livonia Public Schools is a member, and we recommend the purchase of the bandshells to the board.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or board members? Mr. Centers.
For those of us, uh, who are not so musically a client, can you tell us the advantages of installing the bandshells in the auditoriums?
The bandshells, first of all, are, um, going to be, uh, mobile in the sense that the, uh, walls can come down and be stored, and as they're renovating or building those packs, they are creating a storage area for them, and the, uh, top portion of the shelves will be contained in the, um, rigging, so they can come up and come down. And the advantage, of course, is the sound is the, is the reasoning for the bandshell. It will project the sound. If you recall, um, we had the music early in the beginning of the year when we opened up the, the PAC, and it sounded wonderful, actually. This will actually even enhance that by pushing the sound forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mr. Francis, um, just, uh, this was, uh, an original plan. This is not an add-on. This is originally planned with the bond purchase when we were, were talking about the, uh, putting performing arts center together, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Francis, I also understand that the, uh, seeing as the Franklin auditorium is done, that the, the bandshell is going to go into Franklin right away and then be followed by Stevenson when it's ready and Churchill when it's ready?
Correct. We, the bid was written to take delivery when needed, so we won't have to store them, even though it wouldn't be too difficult to store. We will take delivery as, as they're done, and as we know, the Franklin pack is, is already completed, and then we'll move forward from there.
Okay, great. And our price is locked in for the?
Correct.
Even though we'll take delivery up to?
Correct.
Year and a half or two years from now? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'd like to point out that these last three items, as we've been kind of saying quickly, but, uh, these are all portions of the two thousand thirteen bond, and we would like to thank our community again for supplying not only our physical building needs, but many of the items that we may have needed inside of our buildings that fall under equipment, uh, an equipment-type category. Uh, so again, thank you to our community for supplying these needs for our district. The next item on our agenda this evening is item six E, approval of bid results for the Ford F-three-fifty with plow. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of a Ford F-three-fifty pickup truck with plow from Gorno Ford Woodhaven, Michigan, for a total cost of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Support.
That was a close one. I don't know who won that tie.
Yeah. This, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, uh, supported by Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Bonnefield. You can pick whichever one you, how do you like? Uh, and Mr. Francis, would you please address this for the board?
Absolutely. The purchase of the Ford F-three-fifty pickup truck with plow is needed to replace the oldest plow truck in the district's fleet. The, uh, district has ten, uh, trucks with plows on them, uh, and, and some of the oldest ones from nineteen ninety-nine. So this is the first step in a plan to, uh, slowly replace our oldest plow trucks in the fleet. Um, Gorno Ford was the lowest responsible bidder on the My Deal Extended Purchasing Program, and, uh, we did get email confirmation from the, the good folks over at Gorno Ford that the, uh, price is still holding for us.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Um, Mr. Francis, uh, just, uh, for the public, we plow all of our own lots. If you, could you just talk a little bit about the importance and?
Absolutely.
Our ability to have open school when it snows?
Absolutely. We, we, our crews, uh, plow and salt our properties, uh, throughout the district, as well as, um, the, the building folks use the hand, um, like, snow throwers, et cetera. So these, these plows are critical, and if one of them goes down, it's a ten percent loss of, of our capability. Any extra person we can have pushing snow, uh, when the weather's bad, i- is, is better for us to get the lots done and ready for students and staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the superintendent or the board? Also, Mrs. Oakwood's brought to our attention, too, uh, earlier in our last meeting of the Committee of the Whole, that the maintenance department has been very intentionally, uh, setting aside some, some budget items that they, that they were allocated in order to be able to purchase this without, uh, making a hit on our budget, which?
Correct.
Very much appreciated.
Correct.
We have a motion, uh, by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Bonnefield. Um, may I, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Yeah. Mr. Centers says yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item seven, personnel matters, and seven A is teachers for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year to the teachers listed on the attached document. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Winry, would you, would you address this item for us?
Yes, thank you. The five teachers, uh, before you, for your consideration of an interview, along with many other applicants for the vacancies that exist within the school district, we believe these teachers are the most qualified for the position, and we recommend that they be approved for employment by the school board. By the way, all these positions are within our current year budget.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board?
Welcome to Livonia Schools?
Yes, welcome. You're getting into a fabulous district. Uh, seeing no other questions or comments, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers, and Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item seven B, teachers for tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and grant tenure status to the following teachers effective on the respective dates. Lindsay Gray, January eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Kelly A. Thompson, December seventh, two thousand sixteen.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Winry, would you like to address that for us?
Yes, thank you. Affirmative reports and tenure recommendations have been received by the principals, where the, um, teachers listed in this report will complete the required years of probation as stated in the motion. Uh, we recommend approval of their tenure.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item seven C, leaves of absence. May I have a motion, please?
Mrs. Burton.
Mrs. Frank.
Um, I move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the requests for leaves of, leaves of absence as listed below. Judy Bowling, January thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Kim DeSable, December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Diane Gallup, January ninth, two thousand seventeen. Lindsay Obner, December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, and Dawn Spinner, December first, two thousand sixteen.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Winry, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, thank you. All of the employees that you have listed are eligible for leaves of absence as provided under the terms of our collective bargaining agreement, and therefore, we recommend that the board approve these leaves of absence.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board or the superintendent? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item seven D, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Sheila Alice, Patricia Deacon.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr., by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Uh, Mr. Winry, you're up again.
Thank you. These two employees, uh, have a near total of fifty years of service to the district, very impressive. Uh, on behalf of staff and administration, we'd want to thank Sheila Alice and Patricia Deacon for their loyal, dedicated services to the district. And while we love all of our retirees, since I have the microphone?
Right ahead.
I'm going to take just one second, and on behalf of my cabinet colleagues, tell the board and the public how loved Sheila Alice is by her colleagues here in the cabinet. She is regarded as the ultimate professional. Um, she's an expert in her field. Not only we know that, but, uh, our colleagues in other school districts know that. Um, she has an unmatched work ethic. Um, she is the ultimate teammate, and when we are working on projects, there is nothing that any of us would ever do, Sheila wouldn't jump in and help us with. Um, she is famous for that. And, um, I guess the only other thing I'd add is that, uh, maybe other people don't know it, but she's a lot of fun, too. We really enjoy working with her, a great sense of humor. She'll be missed putting together the annual Christmas pageant here at Central Office. Oh, I hear she's coming back for that. So, on behalf of Cabinet, thank you so much, Sheila. With that, um, I would recommend that the board approve the resolutions, uh, before you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members or the superintendent? Most motions are very easy to vote on, some hurt your heart, and this is one that hurts our heart. We will miss you.
I will miss all of you.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item eight, uh, hearing from board members. Uh, item eight A is approval for board trustees to take MASP classes. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve that board trustees Karen Bradford and Crystal Frank take MASP class, CBA one-oh-six, Community Relations Leadership in Troy, Michigan, on February tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Oakwood, would you like to address this item?
Certainly, President Burton. Um, as you know, board members are encouraged to attend educational leadership and developmental workshops, conferences, and seminars, many of which, um, are provided by the Michigan Association of School Boards. Um, per Board policy, BBBC, um, which was recently updated, um, expenditures do require prior board approval. Therefore, we are bringing to you this evening a request for two of our trustees to take one class on February tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Are there any questions or comments from the members of the Board of Education? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Um, I would just personally like to thank, um, our two newest board members for jumping in so enthusiastically and, uh, getting on board with, uh, their, um, certification, and I think we're all really looking forward to the opportunity to, uh, be an honor board with MASP. So thank you both very much for taking that on, so.
You're welcome.
Quickly, thank you.
And Mr. Centers.
I was going to say the exact same thing. It's okay. So, thank you both.
We're really, we've been busy.
That's right. Good. That's great.
You're going to stay busy. Sorry.
I know.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I would echo the comments that have just been made. It's, uh, it is, it's an honor to serve with both of you already in this very brief time, and we thank you so very much. Uh, for, for the members of the public, uh, none of us, with the exception, to my knowledge, of Mrs. Laura, when she came back on the board after having been a board member, uh, in prior years, none of us come onto the board knowing what we need to know in all of the areas for which the board has responsibility, and I commend, uh, these two fine ladies for jumping in with their education to get themselves up to speed very, very quickly on such important matters that lead this district. Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, uh, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Uh, Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 8B, hearing from board members. As is customary for our Board of Education, we have asked one person to handle a lot of the thank yous to a lot of folks that are very deserving on behalf of our Board of Education, as opposed to seven of us saying largely the same thing time after time. So this evening, Mrs. Jarvis is going to take those honors for us, and you'll handle hearings from board members. After Mrs. Jarvis's comments are done, by all means, if other board members would like to make any comments, they're certainly welcome. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. We've had a busy night tonight. Tonight, we first swore in our new and returning trustees, which was a wonderful opportunity to formally recognize that the people who have joined our board are colleagues here. We have a really fabulous board, as they would say on Star Wars. I've got a good feeling about this. We also elected officers within our board. You might see some familiar faces, because when you are working with a good thing, you don't want to stop doing that. So congratulations to the newly elected officers on our board, and thank you. Also, we recognized art students from Stevenson High School, Natalie Kousler, Michelle Lynn, Katrina Musling, Alexa Piersinski, and Laura Stevens. The artwork that these students have brought to share with us is phenomenal, and I've just been enjoying looking at it, as have my colleagues on the board. I hope that the members of the community will have an opportunity to stop in sometime during the month and take a look at this artwork. It's exquisite. We also have new artwork in our lobby from the students at Cooper and Johnson, and that's worth coming and checking out, too. It's phenomenal. So thank you, students, not only for continuing to do excellent work, but for sharing it with the board and with the community. My colleagues and myself were honored tonight for School Board Recognition Month. It's kind of awkward to sit up here and talk about that, because when we work up on this side of the table, we bring a certain amount of passion and dedication that brings us so much joy and so much pleasure to do what we do for our kids and our community, that being honored for it is awkward, but we love it, and we wouldn't do it if we didn't love it. So, sure, we appreciate the honor, but let's you in on a secret, we would have done it anyway. We also recognize tonight Sheila Alice, who is our chief academic officer, who is retiring after 21 years with the district. It puts a big hole in our community and in our district, and as President Burton said, some awfully big and beautiful shoes to fill. I think that the word that's described it the best is your indelible impact on this community. That's a mark that's never going to go away. You have raised the bar. We are a lighthouse district in no small part because of you. And the only reason we're letting you go is because we know that you're going to go to bat for us in Lansing. We also talked about the Young Inventors Showcase participants, which are middle school students. These kids are literally inventing our future. They have designed tabletop replicas of future communities. And wow, if you have a chance to stop by to the showcase over in Novi and take a peek, it's amazing. I've seen some of the pictures, and I can't even describe what they've done. These kids, I can't wait to see if the future matches up with their imagination, because their imagination is dynamite. We had some guests from the robotics team come tonight to talk about the new year for them. The year starts early with them mentoring the middle school team through their competition, and they told us a wonderful story about coming close, and that's how life is. Sometimes you just come close, and that's not a bad thing. They've also invited the community to an open door session on February 1, where we can stop by at Dickinson and take a look at what goes into building a robot. This will not be a competition. They're still making it. So if you want to see the kids in action, please stop by Dickinson Center on February 1 from 6:30 till 8 o'clock. It's an open house, so if you only have a few minutes, you can stop by for that. Congratulations to our five newly hired teachers, and welcome. We're really happy to have you and look forward to working with you. Two of our teachers tonight were granted tenure, so congratulations to them. And we do have an additional retirement. Besides Mrs. Alice, we have Patricia Deacon. Together, they have more than 50 years' service to our community, which is baffling. What a wonderful commitment and an example. So congratulations to these ladies.
Thank you. Are there any other board members who would like to share any comments this evening? Mrs. Bonnefield.
I just, I wanted to mention, we talked about our MASP classes, that a good number of us were at the school law and finance on Saturday. We made it through the fog, and Allison Smith was there with us. And again, just an added thing that we went to, because there's a lot of great information. We gleaned a lot of really great information, and we'll bring that back to the district and make sure that we're always going in the right direction. But again, thank you to my fellow board members for participating, and it was a great day.
Thank you. Other comments from any other board members? Seeing none, again, congratulations to the reelection of Dan and Tammy, the election for the first time to Crystal and Karen. It is, it's an honor to serve on such a board with these committed folks. The next item on our agenda this evening is item 9, recess to closed session for consideration of tenure charges. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District recess to closed session for consideration to proceed upon tenure charges.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go into closed session. We will be off the air for a period of time. I do not know how long that will be, after which the board will come back for a formal vote on the remaining items on our agenda this evening. We are now in closed session. Thank you.